Welcome everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section 54953, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950, Series Resolution Number 2022-137, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Welcome everyone to today's city council meeting, Monday, November 28, 2022. Now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two vacant. District four, Councilmember Klein.
Here.
District three, Vice Mayor Silvera.
There.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. And today's invocation is by Jim Stachow, Harvest Presbyterian Church, and he's available on Zoom. Are you there? Thank you, everybody, please stand up. This will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Lord, we have much to be thankful for. Friends and family and work, community and faith and health. Thank you for our city council who works so hard. For those ending their terms of service and for those about to assume the mantle of leadership. Pray that you would guide and direct tonight's meeting as you do all meetings. And continue to bless our growing community, or may we all experience a little of your gifts this season of hope and peace and joy and love. We pray in Jesus's name, amen.
And today we have a presentation. Today we are presenting a certificate to La Morenita for their 50 year anniversary, presented by Vice Mayor Silvera.
Oh, thank you, and we are going to make a presentation tonight to an iconic business here in our community. We are going to celebrate the 50th anniversary of La Morenita Restaurants. It reads from the city council.
And Javier, if you could please, I'm sorry, Javier, could you please?
Mayor Javier Lopez, District one, Jim James Casey, District four, Mike Klein, and Brett Silvera, the Vice Mayor. Congratulations to La Morenita on their 50th anniversary. The City of Series is proud to have your business located in our community and appreciate all you do.
You know, Mayor, if I may say something?
Absolutely.
You know, I'd like to thank La Morenitas. I'm in the Series Lions Club. And you know, I want to thank you because I know what the organization I belong to does for this community, but people aren't aware of the things that you do for this community also. So I would like to turn around and give you a personal thank you for everything you do for this community that people aren't aware of because of the support that you give the city in a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So she's gonna speak in Spanish and I'll do my best to translate.
Okay, yo quiero decirles a la Ciudad de Series.
I want to tell the City of Series.
Muchas muchas gracias.
Thank you, thank you.
Por su apoyo todos estos años.
For all of these years.
Con la pandemia.
Especially with the pandemic.
Muchísimas, muchísimas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Que Dios los bendiga, siempre los cuide.
Always.
Thank you.
Gracias, gracias. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
Say something real quick, if I may.
Yes, absolutely.
Want to say, reiterate. I actually grew up in this community, even though I don't go to school in this community, but I literally have been in this community since 1980. And watched many of people here and their families grow. And it's been a complete honor to be accepted and be a part of this community in such a way that we never would have thought this 50 years ago. Open our restaurant right there on Hatch Road with 13 tables, that we would be here still. And I just want to thank you, the community at large, for all the support and help along the way.
Thank you.
Just on another note, before we move on, three or four weeks ago, Councilmember Casey and I were lucky to enjoy their 50th anniversary celebration dinner, 500 people at the Hall in Turlock. And it was amazing to listen to their life story and their family's story. So thanks again, and here's another 50 years.
And thank you very much, Tokayo, for, I don't know if everybody knows what Tokayo means. If you share the same name. Muchisimas gracias por todo lo que has hecho. Thank you for everything that you guys have done. And I look forward to, for La Morenita to continue to do business in the City of Series. So thank you once again. Okay, we are now moving on to citizens' communications. While the City of City, excuse me, while the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopt the rules, allow no more than five minutes. Resolution number 2007-106, for expression of the non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on the matters which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chambers doors. I now open citizens' communication. If there's anybody in the public that would like to step up and make a comment. Come on up. And please state your name.
Good evening, City Council. Probably going to be the last council meeting that Mr. Klein will be a council member. And I want to thank him for doing his fine job of coming on board when the council reading needed. Thank you for your service to the city. In addition, something that's not on the calendar tonight or on the agenda. I sent each member of the council an email regarding the open positions that are coming up. And the fact that a new council is going to be seated at the beginning of the year. And then going forward into the future, not too long, there's going to be probably an opening as well as a captain's position. My suggestion was to freeze those positions at this time, not fill them, so that a new police chief, when he's selected in the future, takes a look at his staff, he will have the opportunity. He feels with the guidance of the city and the council might be necessary for the people to move forward. If those positions are filled at the first of the year, the first of January, they're going to be locked in and it'll be hard for a new person to come and make changes if they think that is. So it was just a thought to throw out there for you folks to consider. Something that is earth shattering, but it is a consideration that I think for the new council coming in at the beginning as well as for the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anybody else would like to come up and make a comment? See you none, anybody on Zoom with their hands raised?
No, there's no hands raised on Zoom.
Did we receive any emails?
No, no emails were received.
Okay, thank you very much. Citizens' communication is now closed. Moving on, is there a conflict of interest by any of the council members? Being none. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Is there any citizens that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Can you please step up to the podium and tell me what those items are?
This number, Resolution 2022-143.
Say that one more time.
Pardon me?
Which number, I'm sorry?
Eight.
Number eight? Okay. Is that the only one? Number eight? Okay. Anybody on Zoom with their hand raised to pull an item?
No members with their hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, if we can get a motion.
Move to approve one through seven and nine through 12 on the consent calendar.
Roll call, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, item number eight. Resolution number 2022-143, approving the professional service agreement with Ontel Security Services Incorporated to provide private security for facilities rentals and to patrol city parks and authorize city manager to execute the agreement. Go ahead, sir, that you pulled an item, please step up.
Jean Yegly, serious. Yeah, item number eight. Approving professional service agreement with Ontel Service Security Services to provide private security for facility rental and to patrol city parks and authorizing city manager to execute the agreement. I brought this up some time ago, I mean, quite a while ago. And in this building during the day, there's a lot of people that come through here. There's people putting up parties, there's all kinds of, and everybody here knows from the city council and these other departments know that there's a lot of activity going on compared to several years ago. My question several years ago was, why isn't Ontel in this building during operating hours? And with this here resolution, I understand that part of that is the parks and stuff like that, and they're taking money from people with events. And I assume that Joey Chavez is going to explain this with these individuals because during the day, there's a lot of people in these different rooms certain times of the week. And if they're paying for that, how come nobody's here? I've never, I've been coming here for a long time, and I've only seen some Ontel guy here in the lobby after a council meeting before, but that was probably two years ago. Where's our protection for the people here? I know there should be some protection in administration too, in those areas. But these are civilians here, you know? And I don't know what the security is for these other departments that the chiefs takes care of. But this is just general public, and it's pretty scary. There's been people coming through here and you don't know what, where they're coming from or what their attitude is, you know? It's scary, you can ask Joey, he's seen quite a few of them coming, they're kind of, kind of iffy. But this money, I think it should be, something should happen to this building. And there should be, as long as there's somebody in this building, especially a bunch of people, there should be some security here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any additional?
No, but Mr. City Manager Alex, would you like to address it? Why we do not have Ontel security when it's open because of the way the contract is, is written?
I'll defer to Mr. Chavez, if that's, that's okay?
I can, I can answer that question. Councilmember Klein, for our facility, we have security for our private events, like for a wedding, quinceañera, any private party that the renter pays for the security for the event to be here. If it's an alcohol event, there's three, three guards that they pay for, for the large assembly, for the small assembly, if they're having alcohol in the small assembly, there's two guards. So those are the times that when we have our, our guards here is when we have a special event like that.
Okay, Mr. Chavez, I do, I do agree with you. But what, what, what the question was, was to explain to Mr. Yegly, and, and, and what I'm saying is, is that the security, because of the contract, the way it is, it's mostly for private events. And our parks, when they're, when, when nobody's in the parks, when the gates are closed, you know, it's basically when it's off premise. So Mr. Yegly, just to elaborate, the reason why we do not have them here is during open session with, and it's open to the public. We, it's not part of the contract or the scope of the contract for Ontel services. Now, if you think it's something that we need to, we need to look at, then it goes into the city's general fund budget to pay for Ontel services. Because what we collect for private events from the city is what we do is we pay Ontel with those. So city does not make any money on, on that. All they are is a billing mechanism for Ontel during private events. And then we do pay through the general fund, correct me if I'm wrong, for private security on the parks after, after hours and make sure that the gates are closed. So that is the scope of the contract is the reason why we don't have them here when it's open. Come on to Mr. Yegly.
So, so real quick with the parks, so the parks, they close, they close up to six parks in the evening.
If you can put three minutes back on the timer for Mr. Yegly.
But, but the thing of it is, we do it when it's, when the parks are closed, is when Ontel services come, come on board.
Yes, so they, they do lock the restrooms at night, secure the gates at Smyrna Park. They close the dog park at Neal, the gate there, and at River Bluff. And then they close all the restrooms in the evening and do late patrols. Say midnight to early morning, they do extra patrols. They do one extra one through Smyrna Park, which we call one of our community, a community park, larger park area. And then in the morning, we have a contract with Elite. Elite unlocks the restrooms at Smyrna Park and at Costa Fields. And then also at River Bluff. And then the rest of the parks are facilities that open, they start at six, they unlock the restrooms there.
So does that answer your question, Mr. Yegly, why we do not have them because of the scope of the contract?
I think they need to renegotiate it. What was Mr. Chavez on this definition of, of events? If these people are, whether it's an exercise class two or three times a week or whatever, are these people getting charged for security?
No, we don't, that's, that's, that's a leisure class. We're only, we're only saying when there's a big, large event, like a wedding, quinceañera, those are the major events that we have because we're talking 250 plus in the building.
But one life makes a difference.
But Chavez, you don't, you don't need to answer that question. Is there any additional questions?
No, I think they need to renegotiate that contract and get some protection for the people in this building during the day. Or, and take some money from those people from these other programs that are upstairs too, to help fund it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I bring this item back to count. I'm sorry, Mr. Warren, did you want to make an additional comment? Go ahead, come on.
John Warren, City of Series. I understand the contract is kind of twofold. Part of it involves the community center here and the event for help, American Legion Facility over there as well, when there's events that the general public attend. But what I have a concern with in the way I read the contract is how much patrol do our, these six parks get? Okay? And my understanding is that they get locked up and they get a security check when they're locked up. And Samara Park, they open Samara Park, they unlock it in the morning. And it just so happens the day I went, the one gate on the Garrison side of the property wasn't open. And that was the day. The day of giving. And so my question was, who opens the parks once they're locked up? But Mr. Chavez answered that question. But how many times do they get patrolled at night? Samara gets extra, but from my reading of the contract, all the other five parks, all they get is they lock up when they lock the restrooms, and that's the only thing. There's nothing that says there's continuous patrol. There's nothing that says there's four or five patrols during the night. Or the closed hour. All the parks in the city, all 12 of them or so, close at dark, at dusk. So none of those get any patrol except these six. And Neal Park doesn't even have restrooms. So I don't know why Neal Park was included in this for some reason. There's no restrooms at Neal Park that I can see, I've driven around it a few times. And so the other five have restrooms. And so they're open in the morning by somebody else. So what we're paying for is all I can see is for Ontel to lock them up and do an inspection. And then one other inspection or patrol of Samara Park. And that can only be from the outside because all the, the gates are closed, you can't drive through it after hours. So those are the questions I have. Should spell out in here that they're going to patrol each park a certain number of times. They're going to spend a certain number of hours doing in view, on view patrol. And this is what we're, they've based the contract.
Thank you. Go ahead. I have no more to do. I believe that is it. Go ahead, Mr.
Mr. Warren, Mr. Yegly, couple of answers to your question in the resolution. It states that city has a need for park patrol at night to ensure safety of the surrounding businesses and community, whereas Ontel patrols all the parks periodically at night from dusk to dawn. So that's, that's probably answers your question. It doesn't specifically say how many times because of what's going on in the city. They probably can't determine exactly how many times. But we're confident that they, they patrol those periodically throughout the night, all the parks listed.
Yeah, is there any additional questions by the council?
Mayor, may I add something else?
Absolutely.
Just, just with River Bluff that just opened up down below. I know that's been a big radar for us to see how the traffic is going to be down there. That's one of the things Ontel is doing is that they're driving down and making sure everyone's out of the park. They've moved out from up top, from the bottom to the top. And there's also a walking gate on the side, which they do lock that gate. And then they close the rest of the gate throughout the park. So that's one of the extra services they're doing with this contract.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Joey, appreciate it. Go ahead.
Joey, may I ask you to contact Ontel Security? And just ask them if they have a, a log of what their security does, the parks that, how many times they, they patrol the park? You know, they might do Smyrna Park four times, they might do Berry Grove twice. You know, if, if they have any kind of log, okay? I mean, that would be a direction to, to look at, to go, to take. You know, I guess I should be addressing it to city manager to, you know, to work with Joey, and I apologize for that. But you know, it just, it's just a thought to talk to, to Ontel to see if there's any log and, and, and start the conversation going that way.
Yes, I can do that and.
But we could certainly do that, and the contract does provide for daily reports to be provided to the city, so.
We also have our Public Works Director, Sam Royal, on Zoom that would like to speak.
Okay. Sam, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, council. Sorry, I wasn't there this evening. I've been, I've been sick, I tested positive for COVID. So here I am. Going back to Mr. Warren's question about Neal Park. Neal Park has a dog park that needs to be secured during after hours. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any additional questions by the council?
Move to approve number eight on the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion pass zero.
Okay. Moving on to council member referrals, is there any members of the council that would like to make a referral? See you none. Moving on to reports, I have no reports, council members, is there any reports?
Yes, I have one. Not really report, but I would like to send a sheer thank you and gratitude to Captain Crane. You know, this will be my next to last meeting. This is your last meeting. I would like to thank you for the 23-plus years of service to the City of Series. You know, I have lived here most of my life. I was born here. And the people like, like you, Captain Crane, that, that do a majority of your tenure in one department, you should be commended. And I thank you very much, me personally, for your years of service and your dedication to the City of Series. And I wish you all the best in your retirement and totally enjoy it. Thank you very much.
What day is your last day? Captain? Twenty-six. Okay. Any other referrals, excuse me, any other comments?
George, you're going to talk about Christmas Tree Lane?
We're going to, well, we'll get to him right now, city manager.
I was going to briefly mention Christmas Tree Lane opening on Saturday and ask Mr. Chavez to speak about some of the changes we're making to the event because of the rain that will be coming. So I'll defer to Mr. Chavez, and I, and I know he's excited to talk a little bit about Christmas Tree Lane this, for this year.
Okay, and then after that.
That's all I have, Mayor.
We'll go to the city attorney, Mr. Chavez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. We, we decided this morning, and Katie met this morning talking about, because we do have rain in the forecast coming Thursday, a little bit Friday and then Saturday. Usually Thursday is our day we start setting up. And with all our setup, I don't think, you know, we would ruin a lot of our equipment that we wanted to set up. So we decided, you know, looking at it, what can we do? And we're going to move our event, our side of our event to the community center, which we're going to split the wall out and have Santa on one side and the Grinch. Have this site set up with all our arts and crafts, Santa letter stand where the kids can write their letters to Santa. Arts and craft in the large assembly, we're going to have a few vendors, we're going to have a food vendor still outside. We're going to have Vic's Churro, confirmed today that they're going to donate all the hot cocoa for us. And then we're also buying the cookies, so there'll be free cookies and, and hot cocoa. And also coffee from Starbucks is going to be donating the coffee. So, so the events moving inside, we're going to be decorating, starting, we have to move all our stuff from Smyrna coming in tomorrow, back here to the facility and start decorating for the weekend. So I know it changes the plans, but still the event's going to be here from four to six. And then it gives Santa to go back to Christmas, Christmas Tree Lane for our parade. Parade's going to go no matter what, rain or shine, because that's, opens up Christmas Tree Lane. The CYB is holding their, still their pop-up event. But they're, now they're going to be moving on to the sidewalks on, off the grass. So they're going to be taking a lot of our space. But if, if the does, the rain does come heavy, or at times they're going to cancel their event. So it's kind of, we're trying to push some of those vendors that don't want to be there to put them in the large assembly or upstairs because we have the room for it. So we kind of made that change earlier this morning, we've been working on that all day. But I think it will still be a successful event. We have changed, we're not making a new flyer, what we're doing is just crossing out the location and moving the location here so the people don't see two different flyers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to follow up, if I may.
Yes.
So the flyer has been posted to the various city's social media pages. So I would encourage the community to go to the community center's Facebook page. I will also post a copy of the revised flyer on the webpage. So we want to make sure and push that information out.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Any of the other department heads that would like to make a comment? Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just to echo some of the comments that Councilmember Klein made about Captain Crane here. This will be his final council meeting to his elation, I'm sure. But he's done a wonderful job in the capacity of captain for the last three and a half years. He's been in the profession for 30 years, 23 with us. And he's done nothing but help move this organization forward. He has a lot of respect for the men and women who work and serve this community. He will be greatly missed. I would be remiss in saying that without you, you would have made this job as the chief of police very difficult. So thank you for your help.
Is there any words from you, Captain? I think it's, are you sure? Okay, that's, that's good enough for me. I think he's pushing.
No, I'm, I'm good, just really quick, just thank you, everybody. It's, it's been fun, but it's time to go.
Enjoy your retirement, Cap.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yeah. The Engineering Department would also like to thank you for all the help you had with our traffic calming and control. It was wonderful to work with you. You'll be missed. Mayor, Councilman, I also have a switch in the public outreach for Smyrna Park in consideration of the rain. In consideration of the rain event that we were gonna concurrently schedule a workshop at the parade. Uh, we think it might be more valuable to actually put the tables in here and have. Have Odell present the first public workshop for Smyrna Park conceptual design, along with the Grinch and Santa Claus. So I think we'll get a lot more people to actually do our survey and, and be able to present to them there, so. And so we had two workshops scheduled. One was to be at Smyrna Park and the next one sometime in January. Uh, in the community center, we've switched them. The first one will be in the community center on December third from four to six. And the second one will be held sometime in January, and we'll let you know when that happens. We're working on uh, updating the flyers as well as doing the webpage, not only uh, with the Facebook and uh, that we've already talked about for the. For the event, we'll also be doing the recreation uh, Facebook page as well, so we're, we're gonna. Try, try to make this thing succeed and get as much public uh, outreach or input that we can get. Thank you.
Very much. Any other? Go ahead.
I wanted to report that Stanislas County's registrar voter has completed their canvas and they posted their statement of vote to their website late Wednesday evening after our agenda for this meeting was posted. So we're sticking to schedule where we'll be, where we will be othinging the new council members at the next regular council meeting, December twelfth.
Congratulations to the, to those who, who won. Is there anybody else? The department is?
Hey, Mayor, if, if I mind, we're kind of all over the place this evening, I apologize for that. I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Captain Crane as well for his service. Um, I've enjoyed the short time we've worked together. Um, we had a pretty funny chat this afternoon. I won't share with the group what it was about, but it was fun. Um, and I, and you can tell by, by the color of the shade of red he's turning that, what, what the discussion might have entailed, but I won't share that with the group. Um, I'll miss those chats, um, and look forward, I'm sure you're looking forward to your retirement. Thank you for your service. Um, enjoy. Thank you, Cap.
Right. Newbie?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Okay, we have the county supervisor online. I think so. Okay. Uh, closed session. Uh, the closed session items are being pulled from the agenda, however, we will open it up for the public as it is, was agendized. Is there any comments on closed session? See you none. Okay, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.